Oh, there you go. Okay. Do pack, do pack?
Hey. Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Great.
Okay, so yeah, I work for Skyline College as adjunct faculty. And I just wanted to, I mean, I heard some of the parts of the meeting, I should say. And I just wanted to let you know that this is a really nice platform to raise the voice. But at the same time, what we heard is like, our association is putting up some of the points here. And I just wanted to let you guys know that these days with this online teaching, it is really a shift of mind and a shift of the way you can anticipate teaching, in fact. So it is definitely good and bad. The good part is that we are still able to continue with what we are supposed to do. The not so bad thing, but definitely some effort is taking more to, you know, prepare those online courses. At the same time, you have to make those things speech-to-text conversations and those kind of things. So to make it accessible for all kinds of students, it is like definitely some effort, what should be acknowledged. And that's what I wanted to bring it to. Everybody's notice that when any adjunct faculty is also working, they get one hour as office hour, which is like little less for the effort, what it takes to get ready for a class for two to three hours. So these are the things, I mean, again, nobody's here. It is not a showstopper, but at the same time, if it is acknowledged and rewarded, it would be greatly appreciated. That's what I wanted to say.
Okay, thank you very much. He has brought us into statements from the public on non-agenda items. And this is a section on the agenda that is opened up to the public to speak for three minutes, using a 20-minute total. I've had a request from members from the AFT to speak, and I have a list of names. And so I think, I hope, we'll see if this works. I'm going to call out the names. And we have 15 minutes according to seven. So if the AFT, if you can keep your, look at seven o'clock, we will be finished with your presentations. But I'm going to call the first name is Ariel Smith, counselor from CSM.
Good evening, members of the board, chancellor, and the public. I am Dr. Ariel Smith. I am also the CSM Academic Senate President, but I come here tonight as a counselor. And I'm asking you to do something that no one that we've spoken with has done so far. And that's don't just listen to us, but hear us. And Board of Trustees, I hope I can hold you to the statement that you just made about being responsive to our concerns and our experience within our institution and allow us to feel seen, respected, and acknowledged. We have been told time and again by our district and our deans that the work we do as counselors is valued. We require that almost every single student meet with a counselor at least once during their time here for a reason. We're the backbone of learning communities, statewide initiatives like Guided Pathways, and new programs like Promise, which indicates to us that there is some level of understanding that we hold a discipline-specific professional expertise of significance. We are told by our students that we make a huge difference in their lives and in their educational journeys. Yet, all of our attempts to request changes to better meet our students' needs from our professional and pedagogical expertise as counseling faculty have been ignored and devalued. We have come multiple times in good faith to say that the work we do matters, and we would like to be able to do it better to meet our students' needs. And we have met with silence, lawyers, and insulting devaluations to our roles with recent negotiations calling us part-time employees who deserve part-time pay. In an era of increased scrutiny of institutional practices that perpetuate systems of inequity, this is a clear example of that taking place in our own district. When we have commodified education to the point that we lose our sense of humanity and center efficiency over effectiveness, we are guilty of perpetuating traditional power structures. Counseling has long been a profession that is composed of higher percentages of people of color and people of marginalized identities, and our district is no exception to this rule. Counseling faculty compose one of the largest and most diverse faculty groups in our district and engage in the kind of emotional and individual work with students that is traditionally devalued in our society, and our institution is reflective of that. Our attempts since October of 2018 to bring light to small changes that we would like to make from the perspective of our professional pedagogical expertise have been met with derision and insult, as if what we were asking for was so radical, just a little more time to meet with each of our students to be able to more effectively meet their needs. Thank you so much.
Thank you. I'm going to go down the list I was given. Lavina Zanassi, a counselor from Skyline. Okay, Lavina, please.
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, thank you so much. Good evening, trustees and other respective members. Thank you for this opportunity for a few of us counselors to share with you some important aspects about the work that we do for students who choose to attend our three colleges. My name is Lavinia Zanassi, and I have had the privilege to work as a college counselor for 40 years, 33 of which have been at the community college setting. Counseling in the era of COVID-19 has been altered. No one will argue that the pandemic of 2020 has brought with it irrevocable changes. These new adaptive ways of learning and communicating will most likely not be reversed as we move forward. Yet, at this very moment, if we allow our students the consideration they deserve, these once unfamiliar interactions will make way for increased flexibility, agency, and ultimately resilience. I ask each of you to consider, is this not the true essence of a transformative counselor? We are at a crossroads this summer, one any intersection we before. And at this new juncture, I would like you to contemplate a few truths. Counseling in community colleges is, excuse me, counseling in community colleges is distinct from all other university counseling. We are open access institutions that serve students from all walks of life. We exist within the very neighborhoods of our students' homes, and we invite them to ask questions, to share their concerns, to tell us about their challenges and successes. I ask each of you to consider, is this not the premise of a student-ready college? We don't wish to cut corners, minimize our efforts, or shortchange our students. Rather, we seek improved responsiveness to student needs. I ask you to consider, is this not the core principle of a student-centered institution? Students rely on counselors confidential and nonjudgmental conversations, and this rapport plays an indispensable role in student persistence and success. Persistence and success, exactly that. Is this not the very goal we have been striving to achieve and improve upon for decades, and it still remains central to our collective efforts? We are here to ask for something that is not complicated, intricate, or disingenuous. It is simple, straightforward, and authentic. We are requesting that counselors be given serious consideration for an opportunity to do more of what we do well, to be given the time to realistically address our students' needs, to not confine a student's willingness to learn and to seek greater self-confidence. When is this not a good thing? I urge you to listen to us with no preconceptions and for the well-being of our students to act on your commitments as humanistic educators and leaders. And when you truly hear us, I trust you will make an equitable decision at a time when we are all called upon to examine obsolete, outdated practices and to put an end to structures that present obstacles to progress. I ask you to finally consider endorsing what is right and just. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Jacqueline Escobar, counselor from Skyline.
You hear me okay?
We can, thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, trustee and members. Thank you for your time. My name is Jacqueline Escobar. I'm the counselor at Skyline College for over 20 years. Students, you've applied to the San Mateo Community College District. To start you off on the right path, we've allowed for 30 minutes, 30 minutes to set your path for college. So students, what will I do for you in the 30 minutes? Well, I will find, I will find out about you, find out about your goals, your hopes. I ask questions to get to know you, the person. How are you? No, really, how are you? How have you been? So much is going on in the world at this time. I ask about your expectations for college. I ask what you are most excited about as you begin Skyline and any concerns you might have. We talk about this. I ask about your major and the clarity of your choice of major. We will discuss your course selection for your first year. I will assist you in developing a one-year SEP. I ask if you're applying for financial aid. I will make referrals to appropriate services on campus. You are a veteran. Thank you for your service. You have transcripts from two different colleges that you've attended, and you were told you cannot get them evaluated until you start school? No problem, I'll review them for you. You want to transfer? I researched admissions requirements and policies for all six colleges that you declared an interest in applying to. It's 1:28 PM. I have my next appointment in two minutes. Looks like we're running out of time, I say. Hold on for a minute, let me check my schedule. I have back-to-back appointments, and I'm on the grid until 5:00. Two students. Okay, how about we come back and finish your SEP at 6:30? I'll send you a link. One day later, the student sends an email. Hello, Ms. Escobar, thank you so much for your help. One of the classes that we discussed, I need is closed. Can you please help me find a new class? The conversation continues via email over the next two days. As a counselor, I go out of my way to help my students as do all of my colleagues across the district. The work that we do changes the lives of our students and their families. So it's hard to understand why our request for additional time to work with our students is regarded with so much resistance. Another 15 minutes, 13, 30 minutes, really? We give them, majority of our students, 30 minutes and wonder why we can't move the needle. Our district is failing our students. We have a responsibility to provide our students with access to the counseling support they need to successfully manage our educational system in that of the four years. We have a responsibility to do better for our students. Supporting your counseling faculty by adjusting and increasing the length of appointments means directly supporting your students. Thank you.
Thank you. Sandra Mendez, counselor at Canyatta College.
Good evening, trustees and members. My name is Sandra Mendez, and I have worked as a counselor at Canyatta College for the past 10 years. I'm very fortunate to say that I love my profession because I get to work with one of the most amazing students that we will ever meet in the community college system. During the global pandemic, we could not expect any less. Our students are resilient, hard-working individuals who deserve the very best. This is the main reason why our schedules filled up really quickly. Even right now during summer, we are backlogged three weeks, not because we can't do our job, because the students need us. They need us to support and help them navigate the online system. How do you find jobs? How do you work with situations that are beyond your control? And how do you keep growing and learning? And those are some of the questions that we address before we even get to the student ed plan. Our students have mentioned more than many times how valuable our support has been. And the main challenge really has been not having enough time. But that's something that is beyond both our control because we are there to support them no matter what. Even if it means answering emails beyond work hours, even if it means following up for the 15th time on a certain situation, we care about you. We care about the students because we really believe in the mission that our district has upheld. On that note, one of the challenges has always been, why can't we get more time with the students when the students are asking that time for them? Why can't we provide more support for them when they need it the most? Things will happen, life will change, but the students will always remember how they were treated during this time, during the global pandemic. So I ask all of you to reconsider, listen to us, who are the experts in the lives of the students, trying to help them navigate the system, trying to get them to take classes, trying to really fulfill the mission of the community college access, and really make them feel welcome, especially during the time where everything is close to them. All we ask is more time to support them, and I believe that this benefit will have long-term effects for the positive for everybody on our campus. I'm just wanting to talk in behalf of the students who are not really heard, but that really come to our doors through the counseling session. Even if it's through the Zoom window on our computers, they are there, they exist, and they deserve to be heard. And I really hope I'm giving the opportunity to support them even more. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Jenna French, DRC from Canyatta.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Wonderful. Great job, counselors who spoke before me. Wonderful. Good evening, San Mateo Community College District Board of Trustees. My name is Jenna French. I'm a learning disability specialist, disability counselor at Canyatta College. Why am I here? I'm here to tell you that counselors have been trying for over a year to help students get the best counseling as possible in this district, written in our contract, but also to match what's actually happening on campuses. Let me clarify. Personal counseling is getting long appointments and getting good support to students. We're talking about academic counselors specifically. Academic counselors are fighting for students to get what they deserve. I'm here today representing some adjunct counselors and non-tenure full-time counselors who are unable to speak up. They don't feel comfortable as they might want to apply to future permit jobs. So we are representing a large amount of counselors. Most of the brand-new students in this district are not getting enough time when they first meet with a counselor. They need more time. They need time to learn about programs like Promise. They need to feel safe and heard on campus. They need to tell a counselor that they're sleeping in their car. They need to tell a counselor that they were pepper sprayed during a protest and are still having physical pain. They need to tell a counselor that they don't have money to pay for food. They need to tell a counselor that they don't know how to study. They need to tell a counselor that they haven't taken a class in years and are terrified to come back to school. They need to tell a counselor that they're balancing two jobs, 14 units, two kids while being a single parent. They need to tell a counselor that they're feeling depressed and don't know where to go. All these concerns can come up even before talking about what classes to take. Counselors need more time. There's a safe place for students to share their dreams and fears if they have the time to do it. I want to ask everyone in this meeting, think back to the first time you entered college. Think about all the emotions, the excitement, the fears, the questions, concerns, so much to ask. Do you want to rush to short minute? Or do you want to give them the time to really process that and talk to a counselor? So let me ask you, Board of Trustees, as a brand-new college student, how long do you want in a counseling appointment? I do not understand why the district is rejecting the counselor's professional judgment on how to best serve students. Would the district tell a science professor that their lectures can include certain chapters? Would the district tell an art professor how much paint to use in a painting? Would the district tell a history professor that they could only focus on certain parts of history? The district trusts instructional faculty in their subject area. Please trust us counselors when we ask you how, when we tell you how we want to counsel students. So if it's not clear yet, we need more time for appointments with students. It's ironic because the purpose of counselors is to make sure that students are felt heard. The counselors aren't really feeling heard in this district, the very thing they're hired to do. So please, listen to us for the students, please hear us, that we need more time for counseling. Thank you.
Thank you very much. That was the end of the list for counselors that I have. We now have quite a list for instructional faculty, and it is 7:00. So my request is going to be, if you can not be repetitious, that would be wonderful. And I will start off with the person who has her hand raised. Is it, I don't want to, I'm going to say your name wrong, and I apologize. Suji, Suji, S U J I?
Yes, you're absolutely right. Thank you so much. Good evening, the San Mateo County Community College District trustees and chancellor and my fellow colleagues in there. I am going to talk about faculty workload. I'm an adjunct faculty at Skyline College, and I'm a freebie professor. That means that I just don't teach at Skyline. I teach at other colleges as well. So with that being said, I would like to say is having 40 students enrolled in an online program doesn't fit the pedagogical model of what I want to provide for my students. I usually do not set up a class and run away into thin air. I am present for all 40 students with the time that I have. And having 40 students, I'm not able to provide that authentic relationship and the time that I need with them and/or in order to provide supportive learning environment for them to be successful. Our district motto is student-first. So if that's, if that's the case, then why students are placed in a position for failure and faculty also in a position for failure? And that also becomes an equity issue. So please reconsider about what you think about load for faculty with regards to number of students in a course. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Rhonda Wimmer, professor from Skyline College.
I'm going to pass on this one.
Okay, thank you. Jay Lehman, math professor, CSM.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Oh, great. Well, thank you for giving me a moment to share. I've been teaching at CSM for 31 years now and have never once brought any concerns to the Board of Trustees or my president or so forth. Just to underscore how important I think this issue is of workload. When I was first hired here, we had some good programs, but I have to say we have far more programs now, and it's very exciting. A lot of these things are cutting-edge, and I'm excited for our students and all the opportunities they afford. I feel like many years ago, maybe 10, we were called forward to increase success rates and also close equity gaps. And I do believe that these programs have a lot of potential, and some of those potentials have been realized. But I also have to say that I can see on the council side, we just heard from counselors, quite a number of them, how stretched thin they are. And I've seen that on my side of the fence, too. I've helped co-lead the whole AB 705 movement for math, and a key component of that was working with counselors. And I could just see how stretched thin they were on that, with that project, which is still ongoing and mandated by the state, by the way. And again, that, you know, the whole thing is to raise these success rates, close equity gaps. And the thing of it is, is what happens when these new programs arise for faculty is that we all muster up and we put in time, you know, beyond our wherewithal. But then that next program gets later, and the next program gets layered in, and we truly get overwhelmed. It gets to the point we really can't do it all well. And so we're scrambling to do it all, or picking and choosing certain programs to support. And now with the remote instruction, we've gone on tilt. This spring, it was no more stressful time in my life of 31 years of teaching. And, you know, my worry is the students are going to fall to the brunt of this. One of the key aspects of closing equity gaps and so forth is creating a sense of belonging, showing students that we care. And a lot of that comes by, at the end of the day, after we finish lecturing and after we've graded those tests and all those other things, which, by the way, take much longer online. Grading tests, two or three times as long. Preparation, mammoth. So with all these things going, at the end of the day, ideally, we're still contacting students and catching those that are falling. And it really truly is on the lines of something has to give. And so I'm hoping you can take that into consideration so we can benefit our students better. Thank you.
President Schwarchar, mute.
I'm muted. Oh, yeah, apologies. I'm sorry. Did we have Colo now? Cola Wamba? Physics instructor from Skyline. David Meckler, music faculty, Canyatta.
Hello, just want to quickly think about doing the math if we have supposedly a 40-hour work week. We have five classes, and I'm keeping up with synchronous meetings. So that would be three hours of meeting time per week. That's, we have 25, that's 15 hours. Then, I, using very optimistic numbers, about an hour preparation for lecture each week for each preparation. I don't know, usually takes longer than that. But we're down to 20 hours left in the week. To do online content creation, I find even when I'm working at my most efficient, to make a five-minute video takes at least 30 minutes, of course, probably longer. So again, just a minimum number, that would be 15 hours a week that I'm working on that. And of course, there's the committee work and all that. So when you subtract all those hours out of our 40-hour work week, I'm left with about 12 hours for students. And if you have five sections with 25 students in each, that means you have about five to six minutes per student for all grading, for all contact, for all email, for all Zoom. And it's, I just think our goals are not going to be achieved with five to six minutes per student. So really want to address load issues. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Col, if you're available, we've ready to unmute you.
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes.
All right. So my name is Cola Wamba, and I teach physics at Skyline College. Justified civil unrest has erupted all over the country. A deadly viral pandemic continues to take us by storm, and the terrifying degradation of the Earth's climate continues its steady march to oblivion. Meanwhile, here in California, the richest state in the richest country the world has ever seen, we rely on a power company that can't figure out how to keep from occasionally killing people or even how to reliably keep the lights on. In fact, we just had another blackout in my neighborhood just the other day. In regular times, this could be little more than a mild annoyance. But because the pandemic has forced my students and I to interact exclusively online, having reliable electricity has become more crucial than ever. Of course, it would also be nice if the country wasn't burning and the climate was stable. And somehow, through all this, I'm supposed to just quietly keep teaching physics. And yet, this is exactly what I've been desperately trying to do. In fact, if I can help my students cling to some semblance of normalcy through all this, I consider it a success. But I'm constantly hearing from bewildered students who say they didn't sign up to become online learners, and yet here we are. In particular, for those on the wrong side of the digital divide, it has been nothing short of a nightmare, serving only to amplify the vicious equity gaps that were already there. And that's what this is really about. The uprisings we are seeing in the streets are a rebellion, not only against the status quo of inequitable policing, but also against inequity itself. And this is precisely what our own struggle comes down to. Will you, the district, stand with us in this fight? You actually have the opportunity to be a player here in the movement to divest from brutal policing and invest in education and social services. Listen to what I and my colleagues are saying to you. Don't perpetuate the inequities that underlie the unrest that we see in our streets. What would you have the history books say about this moment? Did California, the richest state in the richest country the world has ever seen, continue to fail to keep the lights on and also fail to properly educate its college student when it mattered the most? Or will they proclaim how we use the current crisis to make bold moves and destroy the inequities that are threatening to bring down the very system itself? Thank you.
Thank you. Helen Zhang. Helen Zhang.
Hello?
Hello?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
I am not expect to speak. Yes. I do this kind of situation. So actually, I talked to my colleague. So most people working harder on. So they were saying just busy like crazy from early morning to midnight. So I don't know. And then besides that, we stay home and so the equipment, the laptop is another problem. All this surprise. So that what I'm trying to say to the autumn materials, I don't know what are going on, we pay by ourselves. We try to do our best to keep our students, everybody together to compete with this hardship, the situation, and try to have my, our students go over and learn more. Even though I invite the guests to speaker, we opening the Zoom meeting and students, they were happy and then I got a very, you know, the good review and response. And anyway, that's what I'm trying to say. We, I try our best, all my colleagues, we try our best, especially my supervisor, Linda Whedon. So we work as a team, we try our best and we learn, we got a lot of experience. But we also hope history to support us over this kind of situation. Thank you.
Thank you. And the last speaker will be, can't say your name, NGA Huy, H U Y H N. And maybe I spelled it, so I don't, trying to stay out of trouble here. Jeremy, you have your hand raised. Maybe we'll go to you until maybe this person will come forward.
Awesome. Oh, thank you.
Yeah. Raise from Eric Brenner to.
Excuse me?
You have a hand raised by Eric Brenner.
Okay.
Sorry, I think, thank you, shorts. I just wanted to real quickly say that the District Senate did talk about the counseling requested our meeting on Monday and the Senate does stand behind the needs and demands of the counseling faculty. I'll just, I'll be really quick because we'll have a more formal resolution for you in the next few weeks. But basically, we support the counseling in their their demands revolving around teaching and learning, specifically around the length of appointment times. I think it's important to state that our counseling faculty are discipline experts in counseling, just the same way I'm a discipline expert in English and faculty are discipline experts in history and sociology, et cetera. And so, and I think it's, I think it's also important to note that the negotiating team for the district and in administration across the district would not presume to tell a history professor, for example, how many questions their final exam should have or how many pages I should assign in my class, right? And so the District Senate is very much against the negotiating team telling the counseling what they believe the best length of their appointment should be. So we just, I just want to just support my counseling colleagues tonight and then I'll also be bringing a recommendation and a resolution to the board next few weeks. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Jeremy. And this will be the last one from faculty, Eric Brenner.
Yeah, hi. Can you hear me? Yeah. I'm Eric Brenner. I've been a faculty member of the district since 1983, first as an instructional designer at CSM and then for most of the time, a librarian at Skyline. And I just want to basically support the faculty, we've been talking about the workload issues because the AFT and Academic Center have been repeatedly, they've raised the need to address excessive workload issues going back to at least 2013 through several sets of contract negotiations, multiple district workload committees, several presentations of the board. And yet, the districts still failed to agree on any proposals for addressing excessive workloads. As a basic aid or community-funded district in a county with very high property values, providing ongoing strong revenues, which provide very healthy budgets among the strongest in the state, the 2019, 20 budget for the district has a reserve of over $30 million, which is 15% of the budget. The state recommends 5% minimum reserve. Our district administrators' salaries are ranked number one in the state. The number of district administrators has increased by 55% since 2011. And yet, we're not seeing the district really step up and address the teaching and learning conditions that we're facing, especially in these difficult times, a global pandemic in which faculty and students are being forced to teach and learn online. The district is still being resistant to agree to contract language that would reduce class sizes and help faculty to be able to help succeed in these unprecedentedly difficult, stressful conditions. The district has the resources to address these teaching and learning conditions. They just have to make it a priority and show faculty they have their respect and that they take their conditions seriously. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Brenner, Professor Brenner. So that is the end of our section for statements from the public on non-agenda items. People help me out if there are any other hand raised on the other topics. I do not see them. So I'm going to move to back to the agenda.
You have a hand raised.
Oh, we do, okay. This is a different topic.
Yes, it is, actually.
Okay.
This is, my name is Dr. Rhonda Wimmer and I teach at Skyline. I'm a professor. And good evening, Board of Trustees, Chancellor and fellow colleagues. What I would actually like to address is the return to campus with COVID-19 transmission. I know this is a public health. It's guided by our public health in the county of San Mateo. But I know there's a lot of concern among students, faculty, staff and administrators about returning to work. You have some faculty that want to return to work and some students that want to return to school. And then you have a safety issue. And the safety issue that I want to address is the transmission with carriers that are asymptomatic. Although there's temperature checks and testing, it does not catch these asymptomatic or presymptomatic students or anybody that comes on campus. So therefore, it puts students, faculty, staff and administration at risk. Given our demographics, it also puts marginalized populations more at risk coming on campus. For CTE, career technical education professions that require hands-on, it's even more. Safety issues become even more paramount. The reason why is because we have to be right next to the student to be able to implement any hands-on work, which means that there's transmission. Because how can physical distancing be implemented? It's contradictory. So if a person cannot implement physical distancing, then again, this is contradictory to one of the stipulations to prevent the transmission and getting the virus. Lastly, what we do know about this virus and what has not changed is increased mobility is directly related to increased cases. There are too many unknown variables and safety should be the highest priority. Opening is not safe. There's a false sense of security associated with opening and testing being put in place. It is needed, of course, to gather data to identify the hotspots, but it does not mean it's safe by any means. Campuses are incubators regardless. Our students, faculty, staff and administrators do not just come from San Mateo County. And I just wanted to address that, that this is not the flu. This is much more severe with longer-lasting symptoms. And I just wanted to bring that to the attention of the board and that there's a lot of people that are concerned about coming back to campus. Thank you very much for the opportunity to address this.
Thank you, Rhonda. Okay, anybody see any other hands raised on non-agenda items? We are going to move to 20-6-6C. Two items were moved from the top of the agenda. And members of the public who have interest in and want to speak on these items, comments relating to the EXOS contract will be made under that agenda item.